I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information.
I move that the board appoint individual A to the administrative position A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I am seeing a item on the agenda, I should ask this before we started, personnel action, do we need to do anything with that?
No ma'am, that was just the closed meeting action, yes ma'am.
Got you, thank you.
I think you do need to approve the employee list, correct Dr. Kaiser?
Oh yeah, yeah, right.
That's why we put the note in there, so we didn't forget. Do we have a motion to approve the employee list?
I move we approve the employee list as presented by HR to this board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing no objection, it passes. That brings us to our opening activities. We will start with a roll call. Mr. Holden, can we start with you?
Sure, Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
Rebecca Berlin-Whitehall.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
John O'Alcaro at large.
Judy Lee-Rivanna District.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Graham Page, Samuel Miller District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Sanu Theam-Risingha, Student Rep.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Thank you. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance, so before you sit, you can just stay standing. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we will observe a moment of silence. Next up is approval of our agenda, do I have a motion?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Judy, second, sorry, moved by Ms. Lee, seconded by Dr. Acuff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no objection, the motion passes. Next up will be approval of our consent agenda, do we have a motion?
I move we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Do we have any discussion or any items to poll? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. We will skip items polled from consent agenda because there were none. That brings us to public comment. Who is doing public comment tonight?
I am.
Mr. Alcaro.
Thank you. We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance cannot be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocols. State your name and address or your voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A commenter will be required to discontinue their comments after three minutes. A color-coded light system is used to time presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is two minutes into the presentation and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute level, limit of the presentation and must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. Tonight, we have one speaker, Samantha Fishbeck. Ms. Fishbeck, you're on.
Do I understand here?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Samantha Fishbeck and I'm a junior at Albemarle High School. I'm here today to speak to you about the issue of the PE program and mainly its effect on those struggling with eating disorders. Contrary to popular belief, these disorders are not a choice made to lose weight, they are a psychological disorder with symptoms closest to that of addiction. They have one of the highest mortality rates of any disorder with one person dying every 52 minutes from them. Without recovery, an individual can face lifelong health consequences such as infertility, organ failure, or in the worst-case scenario, death. On November 17th of 2020, I was diagnosed with an eating disorder. Before this point, I heavily restricted my eating, forced myself to vomit after meals, and overset exercise, sometimes to the point of blacking out. Two years of PE is a requirement for high schoolers in the state of Virginia because it is said to promote health and fitness, but I'd argue that for me and many others with eating disorders, it did the opposite. My freshman year, I took PE1, which seriously set back my recovery. My therapist was very adamant that I don't take the class, yet with the requirement, that wasn't an option. The intensity of the curriculum brought back my disordered habits. On days that I couldn't work out, I struggled more than ever to eat. For my own health, I refrained from completing PE2 since another setback could be detrimental. I've tried presenting my PE teachers and counselor with letters from my doctor, therapist, nutritionist, and psychiatrist, but they said their hands were tied. The virtual PE class has three requirements: weightlifting three times a week, cardio three times a week, and a sport once a week. My team of doctors recommended a gradual and safe approach to activity. Seven days a week is the opposite, but my PE teachers refused to budge. Also, the curriculum requires use of a Fitbit to track calories burned as well as a log to track your caloric intake. Asking someone with an eating disorder to count their calories is equivalent to handing an alcoholic a drink and saying, "You must drink this to graduate." It is beyond dangerous and could be fatal. This is not only an issue for those with eating disorders, but for also all students, 75% of eating disorders start with calorie counting. I asked around about what I should do about my problem. The answer I got is that everyone just cheats on their fitness logs and I should too. As you know, this is against the school's honor code, so those were my options: fail to graduate, cheat, or face a potentially fatal relapse. I understand that PE is a state-required course and for the most part, your hands are tied, but I'm here to see what can be done. As a junior, I'm running out of time to solve this problem, or I will face not graduating. I have a 4.6 GPA, I'm the president of a club, and an accomplished equestrian, but my future is on hold because of one class and a disorder that I can't control. The bare minimum I'm asking for is for the class to be waived for me, but I'm not the only one facing this issue. With approximately 3% of high schoolers struggling with an eating disorder, which means about 150 high schoolers in the county, this is not a matter of just wanting to skip PE, it's a matter of life or death. And I believe that just like you can be exempt from PE for disabilities or injuries, you should be able to be exempt for these mental disorders as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fishbeck. Chair Carlson, I turn it back over to you.
That's an excellent public comment, thank you. And then, I believe Dr. Berlin will be leaving at this point? You're not changed, okay, good. That brings us to announcements, do we have any announcements?
Just real briefly, I just want to mention, I did my last Monday school visit this week at Agner-Hurt Elementary School. Just for whatever it's worth, I've visited all the schools this year, one a week, and many school, all school board members at one time or another joined me for those visits and I really appreciate it, and the principals really appreciated you coming to the schools as well. Altogether, I visited 29 of our sites, we got 24 schools and five other program sites that we have in the county. And I had a great time at Agner-Hurt. I know it's not easy to host a visitor during this time of the year with all the testing that's going on and other activities, but Mike, Arani, and I really had some wonderful classroom visits, so I really appreciate it. I do want to give a shout-out to Jeff Priliman, who's here tonight, he's principal at Center One, and also I see Stacy England, our principal at Croze Elementary School, came out to see what's going on at the school board meeting tonight. And that's it, thank you.
And Dr. Acuff?
Just a couple very quick things. I just want to let everyone know that the Albemarle Foundation for Education, which has been setting up for the past year, is now accepting applications for grants. It is on the website and it is designed to provide support for innovations in our, across schools or in disciplines. It's not a classroom grant program like Donors Choose, but it is going to do some great things in the next years. Secondly, we're going to have the school board set up an advisory committee for environmental sustainability. It had another meeting yesterday, we're going to present to the school board in August. We got to ride on the electrics, one of the electric school buses, and all of that is going to be, I think, very interesting. We've talked about buildings, transportation, grounds, as well as education about environmental issues. And finally, I attended some of the Monticello High School's government Capstone Project presentations, which were really impressive. I mean, they've always been impressive, but I think the organization of them this year, you know, in the forum and the agenda with all the different categories of talks was particularly impressive, and I think they're going to continue to do that, and I encourage my colleagues who didn't, were not, those who, probably you all went sometime when I wasn't there, but it's a very worthwhile endeavor. That's it.
Are there, Ms. Lee?
I was just going to say, many of us up here went to K-Tech's completer ceremony yesterday, which was, it's sort of the kickoff of our graduation season, and it's, I really enjoyed that one. We saw 160 people who had completed their K-Tech work, and I always really appreciate that, and then we have many others coming up.
Love it.
I have just a couple of things too. I would like to place the name of Katie Walker for nomination to the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee for the, to be my representative. Katie is currently the Executive Director of Financial Planning and Analysis for the University of Virginia. She holds a master's degree in secondary education, a PhD in higher education, she has a very extensive resume, and I think that she's going to be a terrific addition to the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee, and I would, I move that we approve her.
Do we need a vote? I'm trying to remember, we, I think we do take votes, so.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that appointment is good. You said you have some other ones?
My other one was that I went to the Monticello High School Community Action Project Presentations last week, and was there for a couple of hours, and some of the items, the topics that were discussed included recycling, human sex trafficking, let's see, potholes in the city of Charlottesville, veteran mental health, has gun violence gotten worse, helping the homeless crisis, stadium exit overcrowding a parking lot, affordable housing, Charlottesville buying K-Tech, climate change, water cleanup in Charlottesville, speed limits, and providing helpful resources to the homeless. It was extremely worthwhile, everybody did a great job in their presentations, and I recommend it for years to come. Thank you.
Any other announcements? That brings us to school board, our superintendent business, do you have any business, Dr. Hawes? On the school board side, I will say that Judy, Ms. Lee, and I are planning to do our pre-agenda on June 8th, and we are going to map out the rest of our sessions for the remainder of the year, and so I will put in a plug to say, please go to the school board working documents, and if you have any suggestions for sessions that you want to see this year, this is your time, this is your week to get those all in. And I'd also like to just commend the fact that we have visited every school in our system this year, so we met that goal. Thank you to everyone who made sure to get out to our schools and visit them before the end of the year. And I will also add that the evaluation tool is on there, so you can check in and see what we're going to be grading ourselves on and make sure that we're staying focused. And that is that. And I'll just say it, Mr. Alcaro visits pretty much every school every year, so he deserves a special round of applause for that work. Thank you, Mr. Alcaro.
I had a recommendation in a meeting today with some bus drivers, and I don't know the legalities of us doing this, but making recommendation, just the way we go to visit schools, for us to take a bus ride, for each of us to take a bus ride. And I know many of you, we've done this like as part of our onboarding, but the recommendation was that we did it on a regular basis, so as we think about next year.
I highly recommend taking a bus ride when Dr. Hawes is driving the bus.
I want to stay alive.
I invited board members this year, the only one that took me up on it was John O.
It was fun.
It was fun. I was glad he was there, too.
Okay, so that brings us to our work session, which is English language, focused on English language learners. We will start, the way it's going to work, I guess you can see it up here, it will be one session, we'll have a little break, and then we'll do the next session.
Pardon us as we get our technicals.
Good evening, I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. We appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening to discuss our English learners. As you may remember, about 11% of our students are English learners. We have students from 96 countries who speak at least 73 home, different languages. From 2016 to 2021, you can see, we had a small fluctuation in our student enrollment, but in 2022, you start seeing an increase. And in 2022, we taught 1,500 students. Today, our enrollment of English learners is 1,597. Ms. McLean, the Assistant Director of ESOL World Languages and Homeschool with our community partners, our teachers, and our building leaders, will outline and frame for you how we serve and support these students, how they are achieving, and what we are thinking about for the future. My pleasure to turn the work session over to Lauren. Ms. McLean.
Hello, school board members, I'm Lauren McLean. I'm excited to talk to you all tonight about our English learners. So to start, just like we start class, we have an objective, which is that we hope you will learn about our L-population programming and support us with our data analysis, so we can support our L-team in determining our next steps in empowering our community. And you may have noticed that we're using words like empowering and community in this, and that's because we want to be very intentional with our language. As Paulo Freire says, "Language is never neutral." Oftentimes, when we talk about our English learners, we use deficit language, but we really know that this is a population who brings a large number of cultural assets. And so that's why we've also shifted our language towards being the English learner team instead of the ESOL team, so we center our students rather than what we teach them. We're also going to be looking at data today, but the data only comes from one moment in time, so we avoid referring to our students as Wida Ones or by their level because we know there's so much more than that. And so with that, today, we're going to talk about our learners, then our teachers will get to talk about the current programming happening in our schools, and then we'll get to look at our data, most of which is from just a week ago, so it's brand-new, and hopefully you all will help us with figuring out our next steps. And so when we think about our learners, the first thing we often think about is their languages. And so as you can see, about 70% of our English learner population speaks Spanish, with our next most common languages being Pashto, Dari, Arabic, and Mandarin. Of our English learner families, about 70% of the parents request interpretation and translation, and that ends up amounting to about 9% of our ACPS families. When we look at our English learners by feeder pattern, we see that the vast majority are in the northern part of the county, with quite a few in the southern part, and then a small but growing group out in the western feeder pattern. And the easier way that we often look at this is by school. For English learners, we specifically look by elementary school, and that's because as students move through their schooling, they often exit services. And so if we were to look at this data by middle school or high school, we'd be looking at where we get newcomer English learners rather than where our populations really are. And so as you can see here, our largest populations are in mostly our northern feeder pattern, and then Mountain View in the southern part of the county. We also hear a lot about our immigrant youth population, this is any student who was born abroad. And so of our immigrant youth currently, 57.6% are identified as English learners. The remaining 42.4% are students who were, they're never English learners, they either had full English proficiency from being from an English-speaking country or English environment, or they are students who have already exited our English learner services. And as you can see from the chart on your right, the largest number of our immigrant youth are in year one of being immigrant youth, that reflects the influx that we saw in 2022, and that's something that the state looks at and takes into account, and hopefully means that we will be awarded some immigrant youth funding this coming school year that we can use to better support this population. And I think everybody who lives in Charlottesville is probably aware that a part of our immigrant youth population is our population of refugees who are supported by the International Rescue Committee. So I'm going to turn it over to Monte Hackney, so he can talk a little bit about them.
Good evening, I'm Monte with the IR, International Rescue Committee in Charlottesville, and actually, our office just recently moved to Albemarle, but we primarily work with the Albemarle and Charlottesville City School Systems. What you're looking at here is the number of youth we've had coming, and the color codes are the countries of origin of many of our families over the last several years. You can see Charlottesville resettled, IRC in Charlottesville resettled over 4,000 refugees in the last 24 years, this is our 25th year in operation. You can see, pointed out here, you can see how Afghanistan has represented the majority of our families that we've worked with in recent years. 2022, of course, being an anomaly here, literally off the charts in all of our categories, so, and that, of course, during the change in government, when the Taliban had taken over and the State Department had evacuated a lot of families from Afghanistan, cities across the United States saw an unusually high number of people coming during that time, so. In terms of the services that we offer in the resettlement program, those are mandated by the State Department, and in youth services, that would include helping children get enrolled in schools in their districts. We can move to the next slide if you want, that'll highlight, there's a button. There we go. So we do mentoring programs for older youth, kind of 15 to 24-year-old age range, we support families and school systems and school staff, kind of taking a liaison role. We do some after-school activities, enrichment activities, summer programming, so we work closely with school districts to try to ensure that kids are receiving some attention and are making progress and integrating into their communities, including their school community.
All right, and so now that you've heard some about our learners, we want to talk to you about what they get to do in their classrooms, and so we'll start with our elementary scholars with Hannah Hendrick from Greer Elementary.
Hi, I'm Hannah Hendrick, and I have the pleasure of teaching our most talented language learners, they speak multiple languages, and so as Lauren talked about, we refer to them as linguistically talented at Greer now, because they really are very talented with languages. So at Greer, we're the most diverse elementary school in Albemarle County. We have 25 languages this year, and you can see on the slide some of the languages that are most represented at Greer this year. Our biggest population are Spanish speakers, we reflect the graph that Lauren showed earlier, and then following that, Pashto and Dari, but we have such a variety, and it's really a pleasure to have such diversity. So we have, 35% of our school are English learners, and at Greer, we really believe that in order to get great student results, the foundation is in collaborating with teachers, and that includes collab teaching and also collaborating in the planning process, and combining that with very focused language intervention groups that are a tier-two, additional to what they receive in their general education classroom, and in a small group that's designed to meet their specific learning needs. and in a small group that's designed to meet their specific learning needs. So in order to do that, we're proud this year that we've been able to have teachers embedded at each grade level, except for kindergarten. In kindergarten, we split all five of us to serve them, but we are embedded in a single grade level, so we're able to participate in all of their planning and collaborate on the planning of the instruction, as well as collaborating and the teaching and the implementation of the instruction. And in addition to our collaborative teaching, we do sheltered language development groups that are tier-two, and those are specifically designed for any student who's not making a year and a half of progress, because we really want kids to be closing that opportunity gap, and so we believe that they should get additional instruction that meets their language needs. And so this year, we've actually also done a real focus on family engagement, and we've had the opportunity to do staff-wide culturally responsive teaching, training, and we've had a real focus and done staff-wide instruction on that. And so we really focused in on family engagement and family partnerships and student partnerships, and been able to do culturally responsive teaching practices and really beef that up in order to boost our academics with students. We also added in a Celebration of Cultures this year, which was a huge success, and you can see some of the pictures from our Celebration of Cultures this year. We had absolutely fabulous attendance, and parents and families were actually participating in providing the workshops about their cultures at the Celebration of Cultures, as well as in sharing traditional foods from their home countries. But we, I think one of the strengths of it was it was a celebration of all cultures, and so it included everyone at Greer. And we also, as part of our family engagement and partnerships focus, we were building on a strong tradition that Greer already has called stepping out, where we do home visits at the beginning of every year to 100% of our students. And so that really starts that family partnership at the beginning of the school year, and it's something that we can use to continue the relationship and help really create that family partnership that helps move kids forward. Another thing we're really proud of this year is we are piloting a newcomer curriculum for our kids in grades three through five. We, all of our ESOL teachers were able to go to the Virginia TSAL Conference this year, and that was great professional development for all of us. We all came back really excited to try out new strategies and things that we had learned at the conference. And one of the things that we were looking for was a newcomer curriculum that we could pilot, and we ended up finding one that we were really happy with this year and had a lot of success with. It's called Bridges SOAR, but its strength is that it has a ton of resources, and resources that are specifically tied with each academic area. And so it really meets the foundational needs of building that academic language for our newest language learners. And with that, I will turn it over to the President of Virginia TSAL.
Good evening. My name is Laura Lewis. I am Lead ESOL Teacher at Burley Middle School. I'm also the President of Virginia TSAL. Okay. So if you want to take a moment and look at the highlights, these are highlights of our ESOL program at Burley. This is my eighth year. When I first started at Burley, I was the only ESOL teacher. But a few years ago, we were able to add a second ESOL teacher, and thanks to your generosity and help, we hired my student teacher of this year, who will be joining us next year, so we will have three ESOL teachers. This does reflect some of the charts that you've seen. So primarily a Hispanic ESOL population, but as of the past few years, a real surge of students from Afghanistan. So our primary languages other than English are Spanish, Dari, Pashto, and also Farsi, Arabic, and some Nepalese. So the way that we support our Ls at Burley with our newcomers, we provide them with three hours of instruction a day, which is really fantastic. So in addition to their English language class of 90 minutes, they get either science with me, I teach a sheltered science ESOL class, or our reading class with our reading specialist. And our, the other ESOL teacher does all math collaboration and push-in. So all of our newcomer students are supported in math, as well as many of our advanced students. So you will see later, Lauren will give you a breakdown of kind of what our WIDA levels are, but suffice it to say that newcomer, you're looking at a Level 1 student. Advanced are maybe Level 2 and 3 students. So these are students who have not tested out of ESOL. Some of them are duly identified, so they have been with us maybe since kindergarten, first or second grade. Some of them maybe arrived this year and have such strong L1 that I moved them into that advanced class. But the advanced class is 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. That reflects the fact that in Virginia, we don't have to follow a certain program, that the state has not imposed specific amounts of time or programs on districts. Districts have the freedom to create their own programs. So in my advanced class, we cover all of the English language standards so that the children can succeed on their reading SOL. In addition, all of those students have access to Reading Plus, which is an intervention program that you are familiar with for supporting middle school, it may be being used at the high school level as well, I'm not sure, readers, students who are not reading at grade level. It's a fantastic program. It really supports the students with vocabulary development, fluency, and comprehension. Because we are getting a new ESOL teacher, I'll be able to do some intensive work with 8th-grade long-term Ls. So these are students that have not tested out of ESOL. Most of them have been here since kindergarten. They're not reading at grade level. So I'll be able to work in collaboration with a language arts teacher, and she'll have them one day, and I'll have them the opposing day. We had a wonderful Hispanic Heritage Night, Spanish Spelling Bee, and our dual-language program, which is kind of unusual, as I'm discovering, because I'm also on a, I'm doing work for the state as an EL regional trainer. So dual-language is one of the options that a district could embrace for supporting their Ls. Not many have in Virginia, and they are, they want to know more. Districts around Virginia want to know more, and they are looking at how we're doing it here in Albemarle. So with the dual-language program, the 8th graders, 27, took the stamp test, 21 received the seal of biliteracy, and all of them have received two extra high school credits and will go on to be able to take a higher-level Spanish in high school. We also have an AVID program. So if you look at the pictures, the top, I guess your right picture, shows me at UVA. I took my group of AVID students, and the girls that I'm standing with all graduated from our ESOL program in Albemarle and are now in the nursing school at UVA. And then next to that, I visited Monticello earlier this spring. I worked very closely with the lead, our Lead ESOL Teacher at Monticello, Ms. Timms, who you'll be hearing from next. And it's great because those are students that I had since 6th grade. They were having a hard time. The Monticello, Ms. Timms was like, "Why don't you just come and see them?" And I'm like, "Okay." And then I was able to kind of pull them out of class and have a little moment to get back together. As you probably can imagine, many of our students have had a lot of trauma in their lives because they've had to leave their homes and they've had to leave family members. And so they come here, and they have maybe me as their first English teacher, and they feel a really close connection. So it's nice to be able to collaborate with my fellow ESOL teachers to know when maybe a visit would be nice, or exchange communication about our students and really support them across the grade levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And then a group of AVID students, a lot of our ESOL students are in the AVID program, and then some of the kind of hands-on learning that we try to do at the middle school level to keep them engaged. So thank you for your time. I am going to pass it now to my counterpart.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Timms. I am the ESOL Department Chair at Monticello High School. I'm part of a ESOL team of four, three teachers and one student support specialist to whom we could not exist without. I'd like to highlight some bright spots in our year this year. The first is our scheduling for student success. We have very strong relationships with our counseling team, our administration, and the department chairs at Monticello that all allow us to select important collaborative partnerships that drive our student's success. In addition, we help to create a master schedule with our admin team that creates a daily home base for our newcomers. They start each day in our ESOL classroom. And we've created for our newcomers a rigorous newcomer schedule that provides them a jumpstart on their academic career with English, algebra, world geography, and earth science, a schedule that will be taken up by the Newcomer Learning Academy when it opens in the fall. We work with our feeder middle schools, Burley and Walton, to learn what we can about our rising 9th graders before they even come to us, so that we have them scheduled in the proper classes from day one. And as we get students enrolled with us, we work with their families and the school counselors to ensure that their schedules are set from the moment that they arrive, so that they have everything that they need for success while they're with us. For the new inquiry work in social studies, we're very proud that we have nearly closed the achievement gap between our Ls and Als. If you look at the data on the bottom of your screen, you'll see some information that was presented by Neely Minton to principals recently. The data in green, 67% pass rate by our Ls at Monticello on the social studies inquiry, next to the 79% pass rate for Als. We contribute that to a heavy collaboration between myself, one of the other ESOL teachers, and our social studies department. We help to provide PD to the teachers, have assisted them to understand that the best practices include providing printed materials, annotating the texts with the class so that all students have a leveled playing field before completing their inquiry writing, making sure that there is student-teacher discourse around the essential questions and ways to approach the supporting questions. I'll be working with Neely this summer to create PD for the upcoming school year for all secondary teachers. Next up, we'd like to celebrate our 2022 algebra success, and I apologize for the typo on the screen in the chart above. That should read "School Year 2021-2022 Data." You see there that our L population is represented in orange on both all math SOL data out of Monticello and our Algebra 1 SOL data, and then all students are in blue. And you can see there that our Ls surpassed All. I repeat, our Ls surpassed All. As someone who has been working on the task force this past year to address the needs of Black and Brown students in math, especially algebra, I feel very pleased with the work that Monticello is doing to address the needs of Ls in Algebra 1. Some of the things that have been done in the past few years with our Algebra 1 to attribute to the success, we have two teachers teaching in a truly collaborative model. You cannot determine which is which in the classroom. They are utilizing student pairs to support each other, so the students are guiding other students in instruction. The teachers are using a positive asset-based mindset, and they have been given the space to provide for differentiated groupings. Next, I'd like to highlight an inaugural event that we had this year. I worked in partnership with UVA's Latin X Fraternities and Sororities to post our first inaugural Latino Student Union. This event brought together over 20 students from the University of Virginia to come and share with over 60 students from Monticello how they can create their own student union to elevate their voices. This was a very important thing that was brought to me, need that was brought to me by students at our school. They wanted a way to elevate their voices, a way to find out about community partnerships, a way to find out about next steps post-graduation, and this will be an ongoing partnership they will have with UVA moving forward into next year and beyond. And finally, I'd like to highlight the two beautiful faces in the corner, two of our five National Honor Society inductees this year. The young lady on the left joined us just this year, and the young man on the right is within his first, finishing his second year with me. They are true embodiments of what it is to be an asset-minded L at Monticello. Thank you. Back to Lauren.
All right. I think we can safely say I'm really lucky to have amazing teachers who I get to work with. So now I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some of our data and how we unpack it. And so the first thing we'll look at is SOL data from 2022. Unfortunately, we don't have 2023 quite yet. But I think it's important for us to look at this also because I think EL data for SOLs can often be confusing. And so when we look at SOL pass rates for English learners, sometimes people see two different numbers. And the reason for that is that the Virginia Department of Education has what's called Semesters of Adjustment, in which students do not count towards how schools are accredited, with the idea that students in their first five years of acquiring language cannot be expected to show full proficiency on state assessments. Part of the reason for that, as some of you learned attending capstones like I did, is because the students do not have the opportunity to take tests like math in their native language. But when we look at our data, we often see, we are looking at our EL students' pass rate in terms of the students who have been here for over five years, and then we also want to look at the unadjusted pass rate. We look at both of these, but we pay more attention to our adjusted pass rate because we do know that it wouldn't be a developmentally appropriate expectation to expect an English learner who's in their first year attending school in an English language environment to show full proficiency on, for example, a 5th-grade reading assessment. So we're really looking at those gaps between the purple and the orange bars as our area of concern. The other thing we look at is our pass rates as they correlate with student WIDA levels. So each year in Virginia, all English learners take the WIDA Access for ELs exam, and they get a level that determines kind of their English proficiency. And when we look at this data, we see that the higher the student's English proficiency is, the more likely they are to be successful on their state assessments. I will give the caveat that students in their first year don't take the 5th grade or 8th grade reading test, so those students who are in that 1 to 1.9 category are often not always captured. However, what we're seeing really is if we get students towards our Level 3 and Level 4, they're really able to show proficiency on the SOLs, which speaks to the strength of our guaranteed viable curriculum in supporting our learners when they have the appropriate linguistic access. So that's really what we work on as the English learner team. And so for that reason, we're going to look at our Spring 2023 data that we got last Wednesday from WIDA. And so when we look at this data, the first thing we can do is unpack what percentage of students fell within each category and what that tends to represent. Again, with the snapshot, this is one moment in time for each kid, and so I'll give you a minute to just to read through this slide. a minute to just to read through this slide. And so what we use that data for is to think about what our language instruction education program will be, and that's what Ms. Lewis spoke about earlier. Within the Commonwealth of Virginia, we are given five options for the programming we can provide our current English learners. We can provide content classes with integrated ESL. That's the type of math classes that both Ms. Lewis and Ms. Tims described, and the co-teaching that Ms. Hendrick described. So that's where we have two teachers in the room working together. We also have ESL, or English Language Development. Those are those sheltered classes or groups that are focused primarily on English language acquisition and that we often use with our students who are still at a lower English proficiency level. There's also the option for newcomer programming, which is not something that we have currently provided, but we will be next year, and we're excited to have that to support our students who have been English learners for less than a year. There is also the ability to provide two types of bilingual programming, transitional bilingual, and dual-language. We provide dual-language because it's been shown to have higher efficacy and is more equitable in that it provides the opportunity for all students to be biliterate rather than transitional bilingual, which are self-contained classes for English learners. And then lastly, for our students who have recently exited, we don't just wave goodbye and forget about them. We keep an eye on them for four years and make sure that we reach out to teachers if we have any concerns about academic support, or sometimes they reach out to us as well. And so when we think about our goals here, I think we often hear from people, like, growth is something that we like, but we're really focused on proficiency. So this is the one time that the Virginia Department of Education and the USDOE only care about growth. So they assign each of our students, based on their grade level and their prior-year proficiency, a growth target, and then we measure whether or not they meet that target. The VDOE this year would like us to have 52% of our students meet that target. Now, they calculate this data differently from me because they're going to take out a number of students who have transferred at various points during the year. But my estimate for our data is that we're at about 48%. And for context, last year we were about 41%, and the year prior at about 38%. So we are trending upwards, and so hopefully we can get to and surpass those VDOE progress targets that increase each year. We had about 7% of our students exit services, which is great. We saw a lot of that in our fourth and fifth-grade classrooms, which is a great time for us to see it. And then Monticello High School and Baker Butler Elementary School were schools where they had the highest percentage of students make growth, who had over 20 ELs. Many of our smaller-population schools also had great progress, but it's a little hard to extrapolate data when you only have two students. And so this is really where we can just stop and answer some questions before we put you all to work on helping us analyze our data. So thank you so much for your time so far. Any questions?
I'm not sure if the question, the last thing you just said about the growth over the past few years in the number of, in measuring progress, that's in spite of COVID and all of that? I mean, how did you operate then?
So I was not here for most of COVID, but I'll say that the VDOE paused their growth in terms of the proficiency, so we should have been aiming for 56% this year, but they paused it so that we were aiming for 52%. So I do think that was in some way a reflection of that. But honestly, I think this really speaks to the amount of hard work our teachers are putting in.
I mean, I'm amazed by all the work you do. I'm particularly amazed, if you saw me before you even announced the Algebra I scores, I was looking at those, and I was like, I think these are right, but, I mean, that is amazing. And it also makes, you know, the thing I also think about is like, what are the things that you're doing, that you continue to do for that group of students? And then are there learning that you have that might be applicable to some of our other students who are struggling? Because, I mean, that's just, that's tremendous, like, should be so proud, and those students and their families should be so proud. So, but that's what I think about as a researcher, of like, wow, what's going on there? You're building connections, you're building relationships, the types of strategies you're using, might those also work with other students? So.
I have, Jonah, were you moving?
I was just going to ask one quick question. And Lauren, when you were talking in one of the early slides where there was a big drop-off from year one numbers to year two, is that because the numbers were so high in the last year, and then they would drop, and maybe that progression would go down as larger numbers?
I think it's a combination of the numbers being particularly high for immigrant youth last year, but also the numbers were especially low the two years prior due to border closures due to the pandemic. And especially, I know, also like UVA pausing on having visiting faculty and graduate students, for example, so their kids didn't come.
I have a very elementary question, I think. Given all of the languages that some of our students have, especially the ones from Afghanistan and other countries, when they first come to your classroom, is there anybody there that's able to speak any of those native languages? Or how is English thought of, taught to them in the very beginning, on day one, week one?
I think they have different answers, so I'm going to, like Hannah, do you want to start?
So, we don't always have teachers that speak their native language. This year, I can say we're really excited because we hired a TA who speaks five of those languages, and she's absolutely amazing, and she's going to go back and get her teacher's certificate, so I'm just like, yay! But, so she speaks all the languages represented from Afghanistan, and that's been wonderful. We all, as English learner teachers, learn a couple words from each language, I think. I do. So like, "afarín" is how you say "good job" in Pachto, even though I don't speak Pachto. And then I speak Spanish, so that's very helpful to them, too. But all of us use lots of high-engagement strategies and visuals, and all of those strategies help kids start to feel more comfortable quickly.
While you're up there, can you tell me a little bit about the Stepping Out, the home visits to all students that happens at Greer? And maybe somebody can say if it happens at other schools as well? How did that come about?
Yes, that, they've been doing that since I got to Greer, the first time I worked at Greer. So I'm not sure I can speak to exactly how it started, but I think it started with some of our Bright Stars teachers. Allison Subra is a wonderful Bright Stars teacher, and so is Debbie Sheeler, and then they expanded it out to the whole school. This year, it was really awesome because we kicked off our culturally responsive teaching professional development for the staff at Stepping Out. And so the way we did our CRT at Greer was a little bit different this year, and we used Stepping Out to do a lot of learning about how to partner with families and then apply that to the rest of the year of our CRT work. So, but Stepping Out, we do a big, we use our pre-service week, so having the whole pre-service week was really helpful this year. And we do like two days of professional development about how to center the comfort of the family when you go into a family's home, and we do a lot of work around, you know, strategies you can use to make that experience comfortable. And then we partner, so we do, we partner two teachers together, usually a resource teacher like myself with a general ed teacher. And then we all go out with our Greer t-shirts and our little drop bags and introduce ourselves, and it's very well-received. We even had families this year change their vacation times so that they would be there for us to arrive, so.
Do you know if other schools do that? Can somebody speak to that?
I was going to try to answer both questions briefly. As the, one of the sheltered English teachers at Monticello, I do not speak any of the languages spoken by the students in my classroom. However, as a national trainer for PSYOP through the Center for Applied Linguistics, I have a lot of tools in my toolbox for meeting the needs of all students, no matter what their language proficiency. We can use a lot of things, as Hannah said, to meet students where they are when they walk in the door without knowing their language. And that's important for all teachers to understand and to have more PD, and if I can plug that while we're here. And as far as home visits go, the Monticello ESOL team did home visits for all of our rising ninth graders for several years prior to the pandemic, and will be bringing those back this summer. We found that many families just loved it in the same way. We put on our t-shirts. I always wear something Monticello every time I go into Southwood. Then everybody remembers me and knows me, and it's easy. They help me get around, and yeah, it's wonderful.
I have a few questions as well. I guess I would start by saying I love the asset-based thinking and approach that y'all took to this presentation, referring to English learners' ELs as linguistically brilliant is just, it's so true. It's such a benefit to be able to speak multiple languages, and I don't think we always think of it that way, so thank you. And there were other areas where it was also asset-based, so thank you. I think my biggest question, and maybe this will be better after the work session, but I'm just curious, is how do we achieve parity between schools? How do we make sure that all of our schools are doing the best approach to English language learners and making sure that they're taking in the curriculum? And also, it seems like there's a lot of different models we're following, so I guess I'm curious how we decide which models we're going to follow, which ones are best practice, and making sure that it's not quite as dependent on having really motivated people making all those choices. And then my last, oh, for staff, do we give any benefit for teachers who speak another language, or like when we talk about the TA who can speak five languages? No, okay. And then two other ones, which were, you mentioned how we're targeted 52%, 40, it's one that's up here. And I guess a question I had is just, what are we doing differently to account for the fact that we're going up? Like, what's the change versus, I'm assuming the pandemic plays into that, but I'm curious. And then the last one is, how does EL work with Mountain View and our dual-language schools? And what are we doing there to deal with EL learning? Those are my notes. Don't have to have all the answers right now, I'm a little, I don't know to what extent we're going to get through some of this in the work session.
So I think I'll start by saying, I think part of the conversation around our language instruction education programs does depend sometimes on the demographics of each of our schools. But to your point, I think that's why we're excited that you'll get to dive into this data with the school leaders who are here, because we want all of our school leaders to feel empowered in making these decisions, and that was an intentional change we did this year. I've met with the school leaders to talk through their programming for next year, and then we also made a really big effort to get this data out to everybody as quickly as possible, so that they have it for making their class lists and for doing scheduling for next year, so we can be more intentional. So I think that's a big focus for us, is figuring that out. I'm trying to remember all of your questions now.
It was a lot. I don't know, I just, this was a really good work session, so thank you, Ellen. I just, I'm hearing so many great things, but from art, like the, you know, the 10,000-foot level, I'm wondering, how do we make sure that the best of the best is getting into every school, and we're not seeing gaps occur? So I guess that's what I, probably if I had to sum everything up, that would be it.
So you asked about kind of what we've seen that we think is making this difference, and I think there's a few things we can probably say. I think one thing we've seen is a focus on co-teaching. We've really been pushing to make sure that more of our English learners are getting co-taught classes, and that's what we see at Baker Butler, at Monticello, at Greer, and at Burley, and that's where we see our long-term Ls, or as one of my counterparts in Fairfax calls them, languishing Ls, who haven't been making progress, really be able to grow with that support. I think sometimes those students fly under the radar. We think that they have their full linguistic proficiency, but they don't yet. And what that also does when we have appropriately staffed schools is it frees up somebody like Ms. Lewis to provide the sheltered instruction for our newcomer students who really need that sheltered time, and having somebody else who can provide that co-teaching. So really putting those two models together. And then you also asked about Mountain View. So Mountain View, the dual-language program, is our language instruction educational program. And so what that means is the students still get support from an English learner-certified teacher during their English part of their instruction, so that's something that they continue to receive. It's just how we measure their proficiency looks a little different. So if you're in a dual-language program, the road to your biliteracy takes a little longer. It eventually happens much faster, but we tend to look for those students to reach their full linguistic proficiency in English by around seventh grade, whereas with other students, we'd look at fifth. And that's why we're excited that the dual-language program continues into Burley and Walton, and so those students are continuing to get both of those supports simultaneously.
Thank you.
While you're up here, if you could ask for anything else from the school board that would make your department more successful, what would it be? Something achievable, not a gazillion dollars and eight, seven extra teachers.
All the Dari interpreters I could get.
Exactly, something realistic.
I think there's probably two things that we really think about. One is making sure that we have time to do professional development and professional learning with all of our teachers and not just our ESOL teachers. So making sure we're talking to our school leaders, especially as we have school leaders who move between different schools with a lot of different EL populations. And so talking to school leaders and talking to our general education teachers about how to support all their learners. And then the other thing I'd say is that we are always thinking about kind of how we can reach our youngest learners earlier. It's against federal law for us to identify preschoolers as English learners, so they're not English learners at that time, and therefore they don't have any like staffing requirements, but we would love to just continue to think about how we're supporting them, because we know that the younger you start learning a language, the easier it is for you.
So we just had a work, our last work session was on professional development. Does anybody remember if we touched on any ESOL stuff? Because I don't, it didn't happen in my little group, but I didn't know if it happened in anybody else's group.
I can, I was going to say, yeah, I can share that I've been working with Megan Wood, who I think led that session, on kind of filling out our scope and sequence for next year around EL professional development, also working with some of our instructional coaches who have a background in English learners, who are in kind of our schools that tend to have large populations. So one's in the Albemarle cluster and one is in the Woodbrook cluster. And so we kind of work with them and then are working to build out the professional learning for next year with an eye towards how we support our general education teachers and our EL teachers simultaneously. And Megan's been a great partner with that.
Great.
Just one more, and I don't know, I think you or maybe someone else said something with appropriate staffing. How do we staff for ESOL teachers? I mean, is that part of the differentiated staffing monies, or is that, I mean, I represent Greer. I mean, so.
It's a separate allocation.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
And so we look.
Based on the percentage of English learners?
It's based on this percentage, but also the level of the students and their grade level. So we know that a newcomer in ninth grade needs more support than a newcomer in kindergarten, but at the same time, a newcomer in first grade needs more support than a student who's had preschool and kindergarten in the English language. And so it's a percentage calculation from there.
Thank you.
Thank you all very, very much. This is, is going great, it's not over, so I won't say it's over yet. We, next on our agenda is a break, and then I believe we're going to come back and, are we going to break out to rooms?
Yes.
Okay.
So do you want me to go ahead and give instructions or wait until y'all come?
How about you give us a little preview of what we're doing, and then we'll do our break, so we know what's going on.
Because, you know, sometimes we take, have to hear it twice.
Just like our students. All right. So we're going to really have you all dive into this data with our teachers, who have spent probably too much time looking at it, and our leaders, who probably haven't had as much, because again, this data is a week old. So we've assigned you two. So we've assigned you to schools. I'll have to grab my phone to see which ones. And so you'll be able to look at that school's data with one of their school leaders and their EL teacher. We really want you all to use the SEE NO WONDER protocol. Thank you. This is a protocol that we use for data analysis and also that we use with our students in the classroom when we're exploring new things. So that's a chance for you all to really look at the data and then reflect on also how this will inform your analysis of other data, like the SOL data that you'll get. And you'll get the opportunity to share your thoughts with schools, but we'll also have you come back with one thing that you have seen or know now and one thing you still wonder, so that we can kind of share that learning across all of our schools as part of our data conversations. To your point about making sure that we are kind of threading the through line across our schools with what high-quality EL instruction looks like. And so the protocol that we have is right here. And in terms of your assignments, Greer will stay here. So that's Dr. Acuff, Ms. Lee, Mr. Alcaro. And then Burley will be in room 241. That's Dr. Berlin, Ms. Coulson, and Ms. Amara Singa. Did I say it right? Probably not.
Close enough.
Nope, it's not close enough. Say it so I can say it.
Amara Singha?
Amara Singha, thank you. All right. And then our Monticello team will be in room 246, and that's Mr. Page and Ms. Osborne. And your teachers and leaders will come with you and have the data ready for us all to dive into.
Awesome. So let's meet in our rooms at about 8:43-ish. Eight, sorry, sorry, 7:50. I don't even know what I was looking at. 8:53-ish. Sorry, 7:53-ish. Oh, my gosh, I'm moving myself an hour ahead.
In 10 minutes.
Yes, in 10 minutes.
Started their CRT work this year, like they had such good communication with the families. And I have one in mind who just submitted and she was constantly texting with these families. And, and the busing issue was completely confusing to her, um, some of her PoshToys people. And they would text her, they, it always started with, "My dear lady." "My dear lady, the bus did not come today, so we're home." And they just, they didn't understand that.
Do they, um, can you, have, like, depression, like, to probably, or? Have some special outreach to families, or? I mean, they're going to be, sure.
Yeah, so it's something we've been working on, um, since they were, they were starting. Um, also, we have lots of experience with this population. Um, so that's been really helpful and I've been thinking about that. Um, in terms of, some of our children trying to collaborate and then in terms of kind of the English literacy for their parents. That's something that we're kind of in conversation on as we think, we see just community capacity there. Since this past year, that was something we've been really encountering before. Um, and so I know that, um, these self classes are well attended, because I often can, I'm able to see them. Um, and we try and head direct parents, um, especially if they live really close to the North South Library to them. Um, but that's a really hard thing. I didn't say it's a hard place next to the North West. So her Afghan family, um, are focused in the, more, I've been working with C O two Ls and what they do, they're in the organization. And having that, you know, like family literacy practices, um, to support our families. Three, the existing family we have, because we've been, we've heard from a lot of people, we have people who are workshops, um, who we have. Um, and so kind of using that as a state framework we, we talked about. But, okay, over the summer, we're gonna have one time where we sit down and just talk about school classes. Because, like, city families are kind of getting used to the all, or kind of feeling the present. And so that was something we've been talking about, um, just like having, you know, just like school literacy practices and getting English knowledge and instruction that happens in our communities.
Started their CRT work this year, like they had such good communication with the families. And I have one in mind who just submitted and she was constantly texting with these families. And, and the busing issue was completely confusing to her, um, some of her Posh-Toes people. And they would text her, they, it always started with, "My dear lady." "My dear lady, the bus did not come today, so we're home." And they just, they didn't understand that.
Do they, um, can you, you have any, like, education, like, to properly, uh, have some special outreach to the families, uh? I mean, they're going to be, sure.
Yeah, so it's something we've been working on, um, since Eric, Eric's last serving. Um, although he has lots of experience with this population. Um, so that's been really helpful and I've been thinking about that. Um, in terms of some part of which we're trying to collaborate and then in terms of kind of the English literacy for the parents. That's something that we're kind of in conversation on as we think, we see just maybe there'll be a capacity there. Since this past year, that was something we've been really encountering before. Um, and so I know that, um, these all classes are well attended, because I often, I'm really seeing them. Um, and we try and head direct parents, um, especially if you live really close to the North South Library, to them. Um, but that's a really hard, I didn't say it's a hard place next to it for them. So, her Afghan family, um, our focus is more, I've been working with C.O. tool ups and what they do, they're in the organization. I have the United Family Literacy Practices, um, to support our families. Three, the existing family we have, because you've been, you first heard about this, because we have people for bookshops, um, who we have. Yeah, so, um, and so kind of using that as a state framework, we, we talked about, okay, over the summer, we're gonna have one time where we sit down and just talk about school classes. Because, like, city families are kind of getting used to the all, or kind of feeling the present, and so that was something we've been talking about. Um, just like having, you know, just like school literacy practices and getting English knowledge instruction that happens in our communities, to better future.
I know that, um, how to see what is in the land, and, um, the, um, the, um, last year, we talked about, um, just being able to communicate with the past few years, and then kind of, um, those are the things that people are having, do you know, like, it's like pushback or talkback.
There's, there's different ones that schools are using and they're working, that we've been trying to push, like, standardization, because, like, Greer and Alamoans use different programs. Um, and that is confusing, because lots of our parents, exactly, like, I'll name, I listed as an emergency contact for one of our families and go, I get messages from two different programs. Um, and so I think that's something that we're kind of working on, helping to standardize. But the other one, that I think sometimes with texting, we're, we're estimating the literacy of our family. Especially, like, we go because of the timeline of, like, our Afghan family, mothers, they don't go to school. And so, like, if we only ever set things right, we just don't communicate.
And another thing with texting that I've learned is really helpful, is if you text and you don't get an immediate response, I voice text the message. And the minute you voice text the message, if you didn't get a response before a lot of times, you'll get a voice text response. And that's the difference, being able to agree the message.
And does it translate?
Well, I'm able to do it in Spanish, so I do a lot of the Spanish communication at our school. Um, but, yeah, my translates, so all of those are coming. Like, that's how, um, Madison was texting back and forth between, um, the family who was missing the bus, was through Remind. And her, she was typing in English and he was receiving it in Posh-Toe.
The whole, the whole late transportation, crossing issues, and absenteeism.
It is, because we don't think about it, we think about it as a tardy, but for a lot of these families, it's, it's an absence when the bus comes late. Because either they have to go to work and they don't have to, you know, whatever it is, or they didn't understand that it was coming later.
Do they know, like, the boys and girls, like, is they, do they, do they do anything with English, or what do they do?
They don't have a class, I'm sure, because.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, they don't have, they don't have, so that has to, um, you know, PM, we have, we have.
I remember.
It is outstanding, I was just wondering what they do with English, you know, development, yeah, English development. What, what are they doing, or what people do?
I might be hoping more speak to this from my experience with the Southwood Boys and Girls Club, which is why it features the, the.
New one is so new.
Yeah, it's so new, but, yeah.
New one is so new.
But I think, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and I think that's something we're looking at as we've blocked out, we're using that space. Especially because they're planning to have our newcomer parent community, the new boys and girls, and that. And so the idea is that's also a space where parents will be familiar with, and we want them to feel safe. And so I think our hope is that they can be able to leverage that to do some more. But again, I think transportation really does continue to be a big, very, 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 um, because they have to pick up. Yeah, and that, there's just now, like, lots of.
Where is it? I mean, it's like a mile, I mean, there's no way to get there.
No, I, when you have conferences, you're like celebrating, or, and you see the parents walking from all the way from here, little walk.
No, no, I mean, just like a mile, and they can't, like, these, we drive to, yeah. Do you guys know that?
Okay, you just have to, you just have to.
That's why I'm like, no, we're not there, so.
No, it wasn't.
I would just say, like, I think that, um, I think the work you're doing with having more people looking at the data, I mean, is important. And it's, it's important for not just English learner teachers to be looking at this, but for all teachers to be looking at this. Um, and like, I feel lucky, because Greer is a very collaborative place. And my team is, like, very excited about looking at this stuff with me, but when Katrina talked about, like, what can we do across the county to make it more even about how our practices are implemented? Um, I think, you know, having this not just be an English learner teacher conversation, but have maybe these conversations, be like, we're all teaching English learners, and that's real now. Um, it's, it's important.
I think we hear about some of the collaborations with.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, and actually, another thing, uh, when someone asked about, do these practices work for other kids? And I was telling you, I always say some practices that work only for non-English speakers don't work for English learners. But practices that work for English learners work for everyone. I've always said that, because they're high facial, they're high engagement, it gets kids talking, they're collaborative, and it's a lot of team and partner building, and relationship building, and that works for all parents. And so.
Successively, yeah.
I mean, it's one thing, it's a special, I, so, you know.
A teacher had a big figure.
Well, good.
Oh, yeah, they took your chair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ooh.
It's like, they're actually collaborative. Right, right, yeah. Well, and another thing that does help with collaboration, I will say, is having, like, CRT by helping them. Like, uh, years ago, when we didn't, it was like you were talking about what you were gonna teach instead of how you were gonna teach it. And when you have that as a foundation, you can talk about how are we going to make this letter, letter better? And what is the how of how we're teaching it, and that is much more efficient than, than figuring out what. So.
We know, we're seeing.
Something I'm wondering about, that's, that's.
So, it may be, like, very.
No, we always, so it's, you know, and.
I know, no wonder.
No, I'm wondering.
Well, I mean, I know we talked about, like, actually, it's, like, really, um, you, you give the, like, a, 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 um, I, 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 um, um.
It was great, and we'll get all of the Virginia T-SO, and I'd love to bring, bring classroom teachers, yeah.
Next year's focus is, like, more, it's our conversations, because she also works with it. And next year's focus for Virginia T-SO is on collaboration, and so the goal is for us to kind of pair up and bring it.
But it gets teachers excited, too, like, from, you try and.
How would you, if those classrooms were, to have some, um, their, their position?
I also, like, how do we, uh, do the, and, and how can we get the families, I mean, I know what you meant, just, um, Ellen, it's, it's multiple, it's about literacy, and the other, you know, the families, and who want the, to, to.
Well, you know what I was thinking about, because the celebration of culture was so great, I mean, it was so great. And we had, like.
The food was special.
The food was, um.
I mean, your pie alone.
So, we, but, but we had, it was a really reflection of Greer, which a lot of times you'll hold events and it's, like, one demographic at a time, or.
I went to a Greer fun, family fun, like, a while ago.
It was small, yeah, yeah, right, but this was, everybody, I mean, and you, I have pictures of it on my phone, like, like, a table, all of them eating dinner together. One spoke in Japanese, we had the French speaking and Portuguese, all at the same table, and somehow they were all talking to each other, but it was, like, it was such a joyful event. But there's, it made me think that if we do something like that towards the beginning of the year, because it plays up from stepping out, and it continues that relationship, and it builds the community, because it's so nice that we're not pandemic anymore, and we're together. Um, then we can use that to do some other more needy, like, academic things, too. Um, and then also, like, individual populations, like, I was thinking it would be really nice to have a women's group. Because Afghan women do not feel comfortable coming and sitting with everybody. And so if, if it was, like, you know, for that engagement of the adult, please, like, a women's meeting group or something like that, where we're going to English and we're talking about practices, literacy practices in the home at the same time, but it's, I think, would be helpful to different.
There was a minute, you remember that, I remember?
Yeah.
That was so, 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 um, just many people.
Right.
And I agree with you, during, or whatever, you know, and again, is that, is the, yeah.
Right.
So, figuring out transportation, for the, for the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have school vans now.
Because every, every, to our families, too, from different, that, um, really, sorry, because I may, I do not, I'm, I, 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 it's, 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 but.
Or completely, yeah.
Too, but we have, that's true, and Sharon West is, is great.
Yeah, and years ago, John, like, the, 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 I mean, I don't know, I, 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 I mean, nobody, yeah. Even his eyes, yeah, the, yeah, so, but we had a couple of things, but it was like things, because, yeah, they, 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 yeah. Right, yeah, yeah. Right, yeah, yeah. We were, we were, we were.
Well, I was gonna say, the other thing, we shouldn't, we shouldn't, we shouldn't, we shouldn't, we shouldn't, which is, you know, we, we should be intent by being people to come in and report how they, and, um, like the person that we just hired, she's so lovely, she speaks by like this, and she's embedded in, you know, she's going out there, it's like, like, oh, yeah. It's like, yeah, because they're all safe.
My group fixed everything. I'm just saying.
That's right, that's great.
All right, who stole my chair?
Oh, I stole someone's chair.
I stole mine, I stole hers.
Confess. Confess, uh.
Thank you.
You didn't see your chair?
Chair stealing.
We needed them.
Barden.
I'm, oh, sorry.
How was your group?
Now I have a pretty warm chair, I am ready for bed though.
Ready for bed.
Oh, campaign today?
I do have stuff I gotta do and wanna get back. Only twenty-seven more days. Are we built in?
Yes.
All right, um, so now that we're all back, I hope you all found that as productive and enjoyable as I did getting to listen to my group. Uh, so I'm wondering if we can just have somebody from each group to share out really briefly, kind of one thing that you saw and one thing that you wonder about. And I see some pointing that makes me think that maybe you talked about this beforehand, so great.
I'm not talking about.
All right.
I can start, I, you want me to start up? Okay, so, um, I was in room two forty-one. Um, and one of the things that I, we, we spent a lot of time with the data, but one of the things that I focused on is, um, you know, the number of kids who are at kind of that, you know, eleven plus, who are, you talked about are kind of, I want to say stuck, but are, are, are sitting there. Um, and, and the, and the number that are not making progress. And is, you know, kind of back to Ellen's question when we started, like, what do you need going forward? And is there something that you need particularly for that group? Um, and they talked a little bit about, you know, one of the things we are doing is putting more of our ESAR recent, in, uh, in middle school, because we were focusing on middle school kids. But I really, those are the kids that I think about. Um, and we talked about those kids are, based on their grade, you know, potentially were going through those, you know, three, four, five grades during COVID. And so they are particularly, like, my mind at risk because of some of that loss that they had of time and attention.
Thanks. I'll just add that I think Laura's done a really great job of highlighting, um, why they're so important, especially because we know that those are also students who, if they continue being English learners, become at high dropout risk. So I'm really excited by the focus that they'll have, um, both at Burleigh and at Journey next year. They're also working on that.
Um, I think, I know we had a couple different ones between all of us, but, um, one thing that really came home to me was how much our transportation issues throughout the year, um, which I know we all have worked hard on and thought about a lot, but they really, really affected our English learners. And I know that, I've heard that and we've said that. Um, but, you know, to really look at the data and understand that when you have a high absenteeism because students' families are not feeling comfortable putting them out for a late bus, and maybe they don't quite understand the communication that maybe is hard to understand for non-English learners. Um, so, like, especially hard to understand. And I think that, uh, that really just doubles down the need for fixing transportation. Um, and then, uh, one thing that I wonder is about, um, you know, how we can break down some of these silos with, uh, getting all teachers, um, all of our instructors to get PD for teaching ELs. It seems like a lot of the tactics that, um, work for our English learners work for others, whereas the converse is not necessarily true. So those are just a couple of things that I took away from that. And Kate and John, if you have any others?
Well, the school that we, that we tried to unpack was Greer, which has a high population of English learners and also a high population of newcomers coming in and out mid-year. And a lot of variability in terms of not only their language skills, but their educational levels. So we did talk a lot about transportation, um, but also talked about the support and the community outreach that is needed for the families, um, to help their students. And, um, I know they're, they have a lot of things on the, uh, on the cooktop they're working on, but it, and, and I think Eric Irizari has been quite good at that, but I think that needs to continue. Um, and I was just super impressed by the people at our table and the dedication.
Yeah, and I want to follow up on the community, the sense of community, because, uh, there used to be a program, uh, called, um, Bridges Over Bread or Bread Over Bridges that was held at K-Tech. And it, it involved people from all the different communities coming in to show off their food. Well, it's like the festival, you know, that was just done. Where, you know, and, and they could all, as, as I think you were saying to us Hannah, that, there were people that didn't speak English, but you could be, have Portuguese and, and, you know, I mean, five different languages at the same table, and somehow they were all communicating. And so as you get, build a, a community within a school, within a school division, um, you know, through, through wonderful groups like the IARC. Uh, I mean, that's, that just, it has to accelerate, you know, uh, uh, learning and caring about each other and having it be, uh, an important part of everybody's life.
Um, my group with Mr. Page and I, we, um, towards the end, we talked more about, um, the PSYOP training. Um, we know that it's an intensive training, but we wondered if perhaps we should set some goals around that and maybe a, a test site or something like that. Um, we also heard about the need to create a unified curriculum and the similar, to have teachers who are doing one thing at Monticello be able to have time to work with teachers who are doing the same thing at Albemarle. It was really enlightening to hear about your needs and your successes and your challenges. So I hope we can, uh, it, it sounded like there are things that, while we are making improvements, there are things that we could do to speed up and continue those improvements. And so I hope that we, what comes out of this is some actionable thing. Um, I love these work sessions because it just gives me more insight to what's going on. But I do hope that something actionable comes out.
Yeah, we were both really concerned about that professional development in the program that was mentioned to us. So we hope that really can be worked in, um, because I think that would have a fantastic effect on our students. And I was really impressed with the dedication of the staff at Monticello. Really great work there.
Well, I also heard about, um, a lot of the professional development for the EL teachers was when they would push into content area and help instructors learn how to work with English language learners. And that, to me, that triggered, well, that's a lot of giving out, what do you do to fill yourself up with, you know, more professional development? So I, I want these teachers to also be on the receiving end of professional development and just not always be the one who are helping other teachers with that, if that's possible.
I feel like I would just be remiss if I didn't name, and the teachers don't know this yet, because I haven't sent out a weekly email, but last week at our Virginia English Supervisors Association meeting, we learned that PSYOP training is also a focus of the Virginia Department of Education for next year. And they're going to be bringing in the Center for Applied Linguistics to do some training, um, for all of us. So that's very exciting too. So this is something that we're really aligning with the state on.
Good, good.
All right, um, does anybody else have anything they want to share?
I just want to thank you, Lauren. I'm, you have been just an amazing, uh, change agent in our, uh, EL programming. And I think that, uh, we have, I want to salute our, our teachers, uh, teacher leaders. They, they are often unrecognized and work behind the scenes and have tremendous success with students that would often go unseen without their support. I also recognize that you have harnessed all that energy and brought some really innovative practices to Albemarle. You're like a person from the future, you know, you, 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 uh, you have worked in other places, you've brought what you know, but you've also, uh, not used the cooker, cookie cutter approach to apply them here. And so that's why we are, our, our pace is quickening in terms of helping students at the same time that our EL population is growing and growing in needs. I also want to, um, earlier, when I mentioned the administrators that were here, I thought that our, our, our principal, Dr. Blunt back there, I thought she was gonna get announced when you all did the presentation. So, uh, Mr. Page sent me a paper note and I also got a text from, um, Stacy England to say, you didn't say anything about, uh, Cassandra and then also Wendy Eckery from Greer. I wanted to announce that she was here tonight as well to support the work. So, um, thank you very much, and just keep up the great work, y'all are, y'all are amazing.
Um, I also want to thank you, um, from my heart, because I'm an English learner. And, um, the asset language is not what I grew up with. So I appreciate what you're doing.
I was gonna end with thank yous as well, although now I'm not gonna be able to compete with that. That is very heartfelt. Um, I was just going, I was just gonna say, thank you, your enthusiasm has, um, shined through and, and what you're doing, the belief in what you're doing has come through. And we are so grateful to have you working on behalf of our students. So thank you all for this presentation.
And I'll just end by saying that we are always happy to do school visits with you guys or do home visits with you guys. Um, we also spend a lot of time at school bus stops and riding school buses. So, you know, if you want to do anything, you are always welcome to reach out to us in the ESAL office and we're happy to, to do that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. Okay, so thank you for the wonderful presentation. That brings us to the last item of business, um, other business. Do we do not need a closed meeting, or do we?
We do not.
We do not.
So is there any other business before we adjourn?
Just want to repeat, we do not need a closed meeting.
Thank you very much.
With that, I call this meeting adjourned.